At the same last, Commissioner Taylor, if he will have our invocation and pledge to the flag of our nation.
Sir, having followed, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting today. We seek your direction and help in making out, making our decisions so we can achieve positive outcomes for our community and county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Well, Commissioners, you have in your package the proposed agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda as it has been given to us?
There is no change. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for today's meeting and further discussion. There are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing relative to a business investment grant agreement for Jodco Manufacturing Incorporated. There are no comments from the public. I'm going to close the public hearing. You also have a public information in your package, the road sign program update. Moving along, our consent agenda. We do have a consent agenda as has been proposed for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the consent agenda?
Seeing no changes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for today's meeting.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for today's meeting and further discussion. There are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We have no one for public comments. We will go right into the presentations. Mr. Cash.
Oh, good morning, everyone. I had two items of business for y'all today. The first one is to approve the business investment grant agreement between Green County and Jodco Manufacturing, formerly known as the project name of the project leader. Jodco Manufacturing represents a company that does plastic injection molding that specializes in window, car window switches. They are relocating their headquarters and research development in their first phase to a 50,000 square foot building right outside of town limits on Carolina Drive here in Green County. They, their goal in this business investment grant is to create 60 jobs over the first three years. Our grant works very similar to the rest of our grants where it's performance based. So they must create 60 jobs in those three years. They must invest at least $4 million in capital investment here in Green County before we start paying their grants. This agreement has steps on that. For each year, we will not pay them any more than they pay in in taxes. So the grant amount of that over the three years is $46,802.21. Pass it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any questions?
We need to approve this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve and a second and further discussion. Good job.
Question, when are they going to be here?
They are closing on the building currently. So last week, the previous building owner, the current building owner, had to clean out the entire building. They are hoping to have this closed by sometime around Thanksgiving and start construction. They are hoping to be operational by March. It's a very fast-paced move, but they're hoping to be operational at least and start hiring at the start of the year.
Good, sounds good.
And our first payment.
Nor today, is that anything to do with?
What's that?
There's, there's a, those lockers today. I didn't know if that was.
That's a, Piedmont After Gas is installing some gas lines down on Carolina Drive. That's also helped with that. But that's for the rest of the facilities down at the drive.
Any other questions? I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir. The next, next item I have is to, for the board of commissioners to approve the building reuse program grant agreement between the state of North Carolina, Green County, and Jodco Manufacturing. Building reuse grant comes from the Department of Commerce through our rural infrastructure program. We were awarded $175,000. The county essentially is a pass through on that. We are the ones that monitor the grant and performance of that for the company. Once the company meets their requirements, we request it from Commerce. Commerce takes it down to the county and then county cuts a check to the company. So this is a formal agreement. We currently have three active building reuse grants in the county. I've had four in the last four years. So we have been very successful in this program. We're very gracious for Department of Commerce. We're one of the big, we have more active grants than any other county in the state in building reuse.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Sir.
I have a motion to approve and a second and further discussion.
Trey did, this is my first reuse grant I've been involved in. Ten months I've been here. Page, page thirty of the, of the building reuse grant states that the Green County can or cannot be on the first lien deed of trust or second lien or whatever. What is the, I see no box check or check yet. What is the standard on that?
Yeah, we typically do not hold a deed of trust on that. The reason why is because we do not pay out. So this grant, the way it works is you can request all $175,000 immediately and give it to the company. And that's where you need a deed of trust. But we hold ours a performance based agreement, just like our business investment grants. We don't hold a deed of trust, but they have to perform everything, meet in Commerce's regulations before we pay it out. So that's how we get, that's how we do that farcism. Yeah.
That's what I was thinking and asked Cal about earlier, but I just didn't.
Because if you, if you pay a hundred, so if you're, if we just pay, if we request a hundred and seventy-five from Commerce right this second, we could pass that to the company immediately. The company has to still create those 60 jobs. And if they don't create those 60 jobs, they owe the county and the state money. So instead of holding a deed of trust, we just hold that, invest that grant until they meet all of that requirement.
Thank you, sir. Well, second to the deal.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was a former attorney Geyser way of working it. So that's the way we kind of keep it going.
Any further questions? There are none. I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you and good job.
Thank you, sir.
It does speak volumes to know that we've got more than any other county in the state relative to our building reuse program with Commerce. Mr. Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, got two items for your consideration. And our first one is our AMI update. This is kind of more of a housekeeping item. You know, we previously, you know, worked out, you know, our agreement with Mueller to, you come in and totally upgrade our technology and, you know, get all the transmitters and everything else replaced on our advanced metering infrastructure system. And you kind of, based on that agreement, we wanted to go ahead and set up a capital project budget order. So, you know, our options were to kind of have a standalone stand aside budget. But because we are using previously withheld retainage from the prior construction contract, I felt it was probably best appropriate to build off of the, you know, the original capital project budget. You know, that kind of supported the, the initial project. So what I did was draft a, a budget ordinance amendment using the information from the, you know, from, from the prior project and then just plugging in the numbers that we agreed to with Mueller to move forward. So, you know, what I've got is, for consideration, is a budget amendment. It honors the prices that we'd already previously agreed to with Mueller. We're just going to run it through an open capital project budget rather than trying to create a, a different one. And it kind of, you know, went ahead and made sure that, you know, that your finance director was, was happy with that. And I got her blessing on it. So I felt it was appropriate to present to y'all for consideration for approval.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second and further discussion.
Where's all this going? Have they already started? Get ready to get started?
Yeah, they've already come out of the inventory, the sites. They've delivered a bunch of the equipment. And they are in the process of wanting to really completely mobilize to where, when they come into the county, they'll stay here and get it done and not come in and pull off, come in and pull off.
Do they give you any time limit if they'll overtake?
Yeah, it's probably going to take them, you know, four months, easy to do it. To put in the, the antennas and the collectors and upgrade your system hardware and stuff like that. And then we're going to have to work on getting the transmitters installed. But we'll see if we can't figure out some way to kind of do that concurrently while they're getting the basic infrastructure in place.
We're not going to have to put up any more structures, antenna structures.
You're not having to pay for it. If there's anything else they're going to have to put up, they mentioned they might put up some repeaters where they're going to use some existing signs along the DOT roads. So they may have to have something on, on one or two signs, but that's not a cost that y'all have to pay for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
The second one, this is our chlorine conversion improvements project. And, you know, when we finally got approval from the state to move forward with advertising this one, this was a project where all of our existing well sites that are using gas chlorine, that we have funding in place to transition all of the gas chlorine over to liquid. You know, certainly it's a, it's a safety concern. You know, gases, you know, become a little bit more difficult to get your hands on. You know, so we were able to get, you know, you know, $1,383,000 to the state. You know, initially it was a 50-50 loan to grant. We were able to convert the loan over to grant. So this is a 100% grant project. You know, based on our, you know, bid design package approval, we went out for bid. We had bid this thing three times. Our low bidder was Wimco, which is a general contractor out of Washington. And so, you know, they build, you know, I'm more familiar with them building, you know, gas stations or restaurants or schools, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, what they're doing is that they are, you know, serving as, as contractor for East Point Contracting, who would be the sub that they propose to do the work. And East Point Contracting is a, you know, a well driller that does this type of conversion type activity. You know, kind of founded by, you know, Majet Well Drilling out of Ohski. It was his longtime superintendent. So the guy's capable of doing the work. But that being said, you know, when we received the bids, based on their low bid, you know, our, you know, we're over a million dollars over budget. And our options are that we can, you know, request supplemental funds from the state. State's not going to give us any grant money, so that would be all loan money. And I'm not interested in that. Our second one would be that we could award that low bid by, you know, taking the million dollars out of your alternative water supply fund, because that's kind of what this activity is geared towards, and move forward with the project. And, you know, point out, that's an easy solution, but, you know, that low bid is pricey. And, you know, if, if that was an option, you know, I would say that we, we cut out enough scope to fit, just do as much work as we could within the available funds. And then over the next year or so, use that money to hire somebody else to come in and do it probably at a much cheaper rate. So I don't like just saying, let's bridge the gap with a million dollars out of your alternative water supply fund. Your third option is that we can reduce the scope to fit the funds that are available. And based on that, if I cut out wells three, four, and seven from the project, you know, I can get the project in the balance with our available funds. And that would leave us with having to use local funds over the next couple of years to transition those wells, you know, from gas to, to liquid. And so, and that may still be something we have to do. And the final option is to reject the bids and rebid the project. And I'll say the low bids are high. You know, we have bid similar projects for other areas in eastern part of the state, and our prices were much lower. You know, I'm talking 70% lower. And when we ran into this evaluation criteria, I kind of reached out to some of those guys, basically saying, you know, why didn't you bid on this project? And, and they were in the process of, of competing on some older work and didn't feel that they were available to give competitive prices. But they have indicated they are interested in providing prices at this point. And I think we've got an opportunity to rebid the project and get lower prices. And it would be my recommendation, just based on the, just the, how high this bid is, would be to reject the bid and re-advertise the project to see if we can get more competitive pricing. So.
That's what I'd recommend.
Yeah.
Do you make that motion?
Yeah, move, recommend that we reject the bid and rebid it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second and further discussion. And if none of those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Can you explain one thing?
Yeah.
You talk about well drillers. How is this going to work? Are they just trying to come in with the liquid and apply what we got? Or they got to re-drill or?
No, yeah, what they'll do is they'll literally tear out all of the gas stuff. And they'll put, you know, they'll just put in these, you know, big, you know, 55 gallon drum tanks. Yeah, they'll be on pedestal with little chemical feed and it'll just, just kind of re-inject using liquid rather than gas. So, you know, it'd be in the same room. We don't have to tear up the building or anything else.
Most other counties have already gone this route if they were able to them too.
Yeah. And again, you know, safety concerns, you know, which I mean, and they probably speak better highly. But, you know, before you always had to have, excuse me, a gas mask at each site, understandably. There's gas, if it leaks, you got to put a mask on. But now you got to have one fitted for each individual. They have to go through certification to deal with the gas. So it, it is just, it's becoming not only expensive to get the gas, but more expensive to, you know, maintain your employees, to have them trained, to have certifications, need to operate the gas. So it's almost like the state's driving you out of that business. Because, you know, I will say, gas is more reliable, it is dependable, it is, it works great. And it has worked great for years. But, you know, it, it's one of those things that when, in the day's age where, you know, there are concerns over terrorism and, and, and really what started the process was, you know, in some of the overseas activities, the terrorists were targeting the infrastructure that, that had gas chlorine. And, and, and so because of that, that kind of, the states have all kind of recommended everybody move towards the liquid versus the gas.
Same, same effect.
Oh, yes. Same effect. It's just that, you know, and, and it's a, you got to monitor it, which I mean, you know, and you got, you know, you've got it in place at two of your well sites now. You know, we had to do two of the conversions. One of them was at the well by the prison because you get a gas leak there, it became difficult to try to, you know, evacuate, you know, 2,000 prisoners. So, you know, you're, you're already operating two wells that are using the liquid right now. So it's not something that y'all aren't used to doing.
And we also use the liquid at the, the booster stations too.
Yeah. So this is all, this law, so it'll all be consistent.
Thanks.
No, thank y'all.
Thank you. Stand the mountain.
Thank you, sir. Just one item for your consideration this morning. In our attempt to keep our fleet current and as updated as possible, an opportunity presented itself. A vendor reached out to staff to let them know that there was an ambulance ready for delivery if our board of commissioners thought it was the right time to replace our oldest unit. They quoted a surprise of $265,000 turnkey, which is in line with pricing from before. I'm not sure pricing is going to stay, I know it sounds weird, this low. It's going to continue to go up. It wasn't in the budget. I consider ambulances capital purchases. Wanted to kind of know what you all thought about a new ambulance entering the fleet. And I think our emergency management director put in our current six fleet ambulance, ambulances for your review. And it would replace the 2017 if I'm not mistaken. Just what are your thoughts? This seems to be a good opportunity. I think we can make the financing or the monies work on it. Are there questions, concerns?
The 2017 model, how many miles we got on it? What's the last thing?
Last page.
Well, the 17, I see it 18, maybe a year newer, but it has 50,000 more miles on it, more hours.
Now, we do have another ambulance on order that will be delivered a year from now in 2026. And I know I have really hammered home hard with the department heads, the eight-year vehicle replacement plan. I do know the emergency management director is trying to convince me that the ambulances need to be on a six-year replacement plan. But currently, we're operating under the eight-year. So just kind of bringing this to you for your consideration.
We're looking at the mileage. I, I clearly understand that the 17 has 50,000 miles less than the 18. However, I also recognize that the 18 and above, all of them are 450s and the 17 is a 350, which is a little bit lighter. Does that play into the concept of replacing the 17?
You know, the replacement vehicle would, it would be consistent. It would be a 450.
Okay, okay.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second and further discussion. There are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. County Attorney, do you have pearls of wisdom for today?
No pearls of wisdom today, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I got just a couple of things. You know, it's a busy time of year and a lot of things are happening. But our Veterans Day celebration will be held next Tuesday, the 11th, at 11 o'clock at the Snow Hill Fire Department. There will be Tuesday, November the 11th, 11 o'clock, Snow Hill Fire Department. Let us do a great job on that Veterans Day celebration. And secondly, I do want to acknowledge the appointment of Mr. Trey Cash over there as the chief operating officer for the EDR. And he'll be housed over there at the GTP. Congratulations on your, your career advancement. You've done a good job and keep up the good work. Thank you. Any other announcements to make?
Football team.
Well, our football team, yes. Our football team has actually made the regional playoffs. They will be playing away. Derek, I don't.
Wallace Rosehill.
Wallace Rosehill, Wallace Rosehill is who they'll be playing. Well, the other option would have been Aiden Griffin.
Okay.
So, but they have, they have advanced to the playoffs and kudos to them. Any other announcements? Do I have a motion that to give in the closed session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to give in the closed session for the purpose of economic development. Any further discussion? And attorney-client privilege, both. Here are no, here are no other discussion. We are, I will vote on going into closed session. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We are going into closed session. We are going into closed session.
We're back in regular session.
We're doing that for later.
We'll have a motion.
I have most to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn in advance of the discussion. Hear and none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it and motion's carried.